I hereby call to order this meeting of the City Council scheduled for Tuesday, February 24, 2015. We would now have our invocation. Reverend LaNard, thank you for being here. Are you going to take the responsibility tonight or do you have one of your colleagues? Okay, well Reverend William LaNard, Reverend Dr. William LaNard will come in, give our invocation. We would like to ask all of you, please stand and remain standing as we salute the flag of the United States of America. Thank you.
All hearts and minds, here it is, far here. Eternal Father, we come this afternoon with grateful hearts. Thank you for the bountifulness of all of your blessings. Thank you, Lord, for how you have provided for each and every one of us and for the city of Tuskegee. And we ask you for your continued blessings upon each and every one that's here tonight and all of our citizens here in Megan County in Tuskegee. And I ask, Lord, that you would bless the leadership of our city, bless them with wisdom and knowledge that they might in turn, Lord, be empowered to help the citizens here in Tuskegee. Well, Lord, we ask your blessings upon all things, all things that need to, in the name of Jesus Christ, we ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. LaNard. Thank the citizens for participating. We will now go to our roll call and ask our city clerk, Mr. Protemon Clark, if you would be kind enough to call the roll.
Mayor Ford.
Present.
Mayor Protemon Hayden.
Present.
Councilwoman Moon.
Present.
Councilwoman Whitehead.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Office of the Council, off.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. We will now go to approval of the agenda. And I wanted to, yeah, we have Mr. Roll on, right, and Darren Maul, I want to put him on as well. Miss Maul, you're here, you're your partner here. He has a circuit board project that is used, I'm going to put, I'll call on you later, used to communicate with our citizens, one of those circuit boards. In fact, it's like that big tall sign that, I remember Mayor Omar Deo, his program used to be involved in. Remember that big tall sign that used to advertise names and programs, calendars? But it's a much smaller one, and he has one that he wants to share with us, so we'll put you on. It's not going to cost us anything, right?
No, it's not good.
All right. We will, any items to be added to the agenda, Mr. Protemon?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to add the Megan County Healthcare Authority. For brief note, I think, City Manager, who are you going to add them? I'd like to add Megan County Healthcare Authority, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good. That was all right. And Council Lady Moon?
I have no additions.
Okay. Council Lady Whitehead, Council Lady.
Give the addition for the Honoring Citizen District One, Mr. Roosevelt Hall.
Is he?
Mr. Hall here?
Okay. We'll add Mr. Roosevelt Hall.
Roosevelt Hall. I'll give a reminder.
Okay, good. Whenever you ready, however. Chair will entertain a motion for adoption of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lee, seconded by Protemon. Questions, comments? Being none. Those in favor of the motion, please give a sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, nay, so be the motion, is carried. Now, for our February 10, 2015 minutes, the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the amendments.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Council Lady Moon, seconded by Council Lady Whitehead. Questions, comments? Being none. Those in favor of the motion, please give a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please give a sign of nay, the amendments are adopted for February 10, 2015. Now, for our citizens, we have a three-minute presentation. In fact, Mr. Maul, you can come and make your presentation at this time, but it is now open for our citizens. Anyone else who wants to make a presentation?
Good evening to everyone, City Manager, all the council members, just want, and everyone that came, I just want to thank you all for allowing me to come in, you know, I've been before you before. Well, we coming to finish up everything that we started in the past, and my partner, he couldn't make it tonight, but I came. And just want to talk to you all about what we propose to the city, and we got an LED, it's a billboard that's going to be able to, for the emergency management, to communicate to the motorists when they're driving, and the city will be able to communicate anything to the citizens that they need to, within the city. And I got an advertising agency out of New York City called Frontier Advertising, so in the downtime, we'll be doing advertising, which it won't cost the city anything, and the city will be able to make 5% of gross revenue. So we also bring the revenue back into the city. But I wanted to make sure I get you all a blessing on everything. We do have a board that's at the fire station right now, you can go down and take a look at, and it, I mean, it's clear you can see anything. So the program and everything, we'll talk to you all about that, where we're going to get a location and everything, and just, you know.
Do you have a picture of it to show to the council tonight? I know you have the real thing.
Well, I don't have it tonight, but I will, immediately I get you all emailing and get you some pictures of it.
How big is it?
It's three and a half feet tall and six and a half feet long.
All right. Go ahead.
And y'all have any question, you know, you could just feel free.
Is that the same size as the one at the fire department?
Yeah, that's the one at the fire department.
So, how long has it been up?
Well, we haven't, we haven't put it up yet.
Oh, okay.
It's at the fire department. If you want to take a look at it though, you know, you can come down and get a look at it, you know. And I already got some pre-program message already in there, so you plug it up and get a look at it.
So, and I know you said that we would get 5% off of the gross revenue by advertising ourselves, but will we also, you know, will we be able to advertise our things for free or however?
Yeah, anything the city need to do, everything's free for you all.
Okay.
So we got your cover on all bases. And I got everything covered and cleared because, you know, I am on the vendor for the state of Alabama, and, you know, once we put it in the city, we got a million dollars of insurance coverage and everything. So we got everything covered, the whole basis. And my partner, they're tied into South Carolina, so we looking to do like three boards, so once we start bringing, once we get more than two boards in, the company that, we do the billboard advertising now, so they're going to transfer all of their clients over to us, so we'll be able to really generate funding for the city of Tuskegee.
So where exactly are you looking to put this?
I want to put it on the city street, we looking at like Farnfield Street, so I want to get with, you know, the mayor and City Manager and make sure we get a good spot for it and everything.
It will also help in times of emergencies like a fire truck, responding to a police department, Amber Alert, any emergency message, that's the main safety capability, because you can have anything, chemical spill, different things that you need to get to the motorists.
And because it, you know, the quality of the board, you'll be able to see it, 150-degree radius, like the side radius of it, and so when anything happens, you'll be able to immediately get that message up there and still communicate with people, because we want safety come first overall, you know, you never know what you might have to come up that you need to get the message out immediately.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager, you just work with here in York, and this administrative, quite frankly, as long as it doesn't cost us anything and if we can use it to make public announcements.
Yes.
Announce our council meetings, utility board meetings, just publicly, and say if you, maybe located somewhere around when this complex in this area here. I know, I don't know if the citizens remember that big tall sign, how they used to advertise up there, and now as you're sitting there, I don't know, maybe you ought to find out if, who owns that and see if you can put it up there, I mean, because that way that thing can be seen from Green Fork almost, it's very high. Well, Mayor Deo may know something about it.
Okay, well, what we trying to do deep for, we want to make sure that motors, like when you're traveling, so we're going to put them in known areas, because we have been in DC, so I'm on code according to the MUTCD, I also been in state of Alabama as well, so what I'm trying to do right now is, once we implement that technology, it'll be able to, like you can show the picture of the fire department or police department, you can show everything and let the motorists anywhere know that they're in route, you know, what's going on, so you won't have people getting into certain areas.
Okay, so you just worked with the City Manager. I wanted you to draw a work out.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much.
You have a blessed day.
Now, our citizens, we're ready now. Reed.
Mayor.
Yes.
Council.
City Manager, Councilor.
City Clerk.
This is an old story, I don't know why I'm here, I think. We've spent a lot of time coming up with this, with the closing of the clubs at a certain time, and nothing's changed, so I guess it's directed towards the City Manager here. Still having issues with the club closing at 5 o'clock. I understand that there's a clause on special occasions, but you have a special occasion on the 14th, the 15th, the 20th, the 21st. It's a lot of special occasions. So, I guess I'm asking, what do we have to do to get this to work?
He didn't have authority to pass the 14th. And I apologize for that. That won't happen again. I think he extended his authority and gone past 4. So we make sure to each other down, not opening anymore.
Well, on the morning of the 15th, he had a little shooting going on over there, some guy just had a shooting to the door, well, scared the crap out of my tent, and they're talking about leaving. This is starting to affect me greatly. So, yeah, we need to do something with this, because I don't know how many passes he gets, but he sure has got to warn out his nine lives.
That was just especially meant, happened Valentine night.
What's that?
It was Valentine night.
So he can stay open to 5 o'clock on Valentine?
No. He was here for.
Okay, well, now, City Council, please help me out, because this is, business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Reed, I have taken the citizens' concerns, and I usually pass them on to the City Manager, but this concern is from several citizens on Viv Street and students in the apartment units, and they report that they feel that their neighborhood is not safe because of the nightclub and the late-night shootings. So I have that on my agenda for citizens in District 3, and I will pass it on to the City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Protemon, I heard from you.
I heard, I had a call on the next day from citizens regarding the shooting, even though I heard from a different person about the shooting. This is far beyond what we expected. And I'm seriously disappointed that we keep you in the past when the council took all their time to set up these guidelines, and we keep ignoring and passing them in a situation where the people aren't doing what they're supposed to do. So, Council, I don't know what you expect to do, but I think we need to take some kind of action sooner or later to decide if the council has authority to do something. Because we don't need citizens leaving this community, and that is happening here, it's because we're not doing our job. And the City Manager, if they not doing their job, then I don't think we need to get them a pass. I think we discussed this before, and I'm really disappointed in them, and I'm disappointed in us that even considering that. Now, I got a call about the shooting, and then I got a call from another citizen, so Mr. Mayor, City Council members, I think we need to take that seriously, because citizens are here, we can ignore it if you want to, but they're saying that. I was with a group of students last week who brought this up, and their concern is about these shootings. It's what the citizens say, and we don't want to talk about it, we don't want to address it, we don't want to ignore it, that's what keeps citizens feeling uncomfortable here, and we can't afford that. So I think we need to do something about this and take this seriously. I apologize to Mr. Reed, he's not just a person coming here, he is a manager of several properties where students live. At some point, we need to recognize that and act responsibly, and I hope we'll act responsibly as the City Council and its management. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Protemon, Council Lady Whitehead, Lady, Council.
This is my.
Oh, that's right.
I hadn't heard anything about this shooting, but of course, I am all for trying to do something about a lot of shootings in Tuskegee. We've been having, we had a drive-by shooting, and now we still have these club shootings. We got to do something about it. Clubs just need to be shut down, in my estimation.
I have, I think we all have been extremely patient dealing with this situation, and it's very unfortunate that, once again, we're hearing incidents. We can't always necessarily control the shooting in the community, but I think we can follow the ordinances that, the way they are written, and when that's not being done, you know, it's almost a blatant sign of disrespect to the council. So I think that we do have to take some action, I'm not sure exactly what the action will be, but for certain, I know that, I don't think that this time we should allow any more special event, for sure, extension, and if, or at least say that if there is a special event extension, that it has to be approved by the council, because this isn't the first time that, you know, the special event extended time was given and then there was an incident. So, you know, I mean, I'm hearing it from the citizens of District 1 as well, again, you know, I'm all about business in the community, but, you know, when, when, it's, enough is enough, I guess, to say on that, so I think we're all in pretty strong agreeance with that.
Okay, we've heard from all of the members of the council. Council, remember, this is a city management form of government. The City Council authorizes and hires the City Manager, and he has a responsibility for implementing the council policies. Now, the council, you asked a question, what can we do, what should we do? Well, it's left to the council, in this form of government, you can decide. You raised a question about the special privileges or the special extensions from time to time. The council has the authority to adopt a rule that, before you any extensions, they can only be approved by the council, and have that authority. So if you want to continue to talk about it, we can continue to do that, or the chair will entertain a motion for any action. Perhaps, let me just simply say this, I do not, at the, and I'm speaking as the mayor of the city, elected by the people, we all elected by the people, I don't think that we ought to close down all clubs or social entertainment facilities in our city. This is a city that should have churches, ought to have entertainment, ought to have eating establishments, ought to have ability to purchase goods and services, I think we ought to have in this community everything any other community has. Now, what we have to do though, is regulate and to make sure that clubs, restaurants, whatever, to make sure that they go by the rules and the policies we established. So, of all that's in the councils, thought, I missed this shooting, I know we had a problem with the parties, that had been a problem in the past, and we express our concern, position, all that, but what would the council like to do in this particular instance? I would suggest that we just go ahead and adopt a policy that no extensions, no exceptions to the rule unless authorized by the City Council. You have that authority?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree that we deserve entertainment in our community, however, I've been on the council a number of years, and this particular nightclub has been before the councils of the city of Tuskegee and this municipality for many years, and the owner has absolutely blatantly disregarded the hard work that we've done to try to give them the leverage to stay open. I don't think we need to adopt one more single ordinance or give him one more chance. I'm reading my notes now, and there's one citizen who said that there was no security, and I know in the ordinance somewhere, they agreed to have security. On several occasions, they reported no security. So, to my colleagues, I recommend that Mason's nightclub be closed until further notice, until we can get together and discuss how we want to handle this with the City Manager. But I recommend that we close Mason's immediately.
Well, you, the council lady has places in the form of a motion, the chair will entertain a second, as a second, and entertain the motion for action.
I second the motion.
Oh, you understand, all right. Lady Laura Mike.
I second the motion.
Okay, it has, it has been moved and properly seconded. It has been moved and properly seconded. So, Council, the issue now before you about immediately closing down the business, what I had suggested earlier to you is that you may want to set a rule that no special events and no additional exceptions be taken. The council lady has made a motion, and it has been seconded, that we close the business. Now, that's the issue that's before the council at this particular point, for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request an amendment to the motion. I'd request an amendment that the nightclub be closed for a period of two weeks until we meet again and have an opportunity to meet with the City Manager, because there's some conflict here, when the council gave, as Council Police said, we gave a directive as to how we wanted to operate, and we keep giving extensions to this conflict of what the council has done, so therefore the nightclub may have perception that they have authority to stay open, and that's conflict of gad. So I would ask that they be closed immediately for a period of two weeks, give us time for the next meeting, to meet with the City Manager, City Attorney, and resolve this situation. It's a very serious situation, and while I support the idea, I want to make sure it's really clear in what we're doing and how we move our council, how we move, so I do support the idea, I'm very disappointed we haven't gone to this, but when someone, authority keeps giving them that, which the council has said, and made very clear over a period of time, how we want to move, I'm very disappointed we haven't come to this. And I agree, I don't want to give any more ordinance of the gad that we've given the ordinance, it's a matter of execution. And so, now that we just need to meet with the City Manager and decide what we want to do, but I would offer if she will accept it, an amendment for at least a period of two weeks.
I accept your amendment.
Until we resolve whatever issues need to be resolved.
I accept the amendment, or it to read a period of two weeks.
Will you second the amendment? Okay. It has been moved and properly seconded, so we have the amendment. Now, the question, the amended motion before the council. Mr. Attorney, do you have any comment before we vote? Essentially, essentially what they are saying, two weeks closure, giving us time to meet with the City Manager, Police Chief, et cetera, and then we'll reconsider the amendment again.
Mr. Mayor, this is the council, good evening.
Good evening.
When I've heard the subject being brought by Mr. Reed, as I have known, you know, this conversation with the current, I asked for the ordinance to be brought down so that I can take a look at your current ordinance during the meeting, to ensure that any action that the council takes, that it reports with what your ordinance calls for. And I didn't really expect a motion during the public comments part of the meeting, and so I would simply ask if you can wait until your action part of your agenda to carry this, if you want yours truly to at least review the ordinance or take it up and look at it. It's been a while since I've been realizing that I drafted that, but it's been a while since I've seen it.
Well, we can deal with the motion now or wait until the action portion of the agenda, that make me a difference.
Yes, sir. So, Attorney Gray kind of addressed my concern there, I was, I was wondering, you know, we took action here now, because the city was the one that authorized the time extension, would that put us in any kind of, you know, legal, I guess, wrongdoing? Because, you know, I guess the authorized agent of the city did give permission for them to stay open, so by closing them, you know.
I would leave the warrant in the papers. Okay.
Under, Mr. Mayor, under council updates, we could make a motion at that time, since it's on the agenda, council update, under the City Manager's communications, is that acceptable to the council?
Sure, that's fine, we can do it, I encourage, make sure that we do not pass it by. Okay? All right, so that's what we'll do, we'll just hold the motion to that particular point. Okay? All right. Further public comment, further public comment, further public comment. Being none, yes, go right here.
To the council, Leon Fraser, Brothers Brad. I just wanted to say that Queen Mother Mary, you're going to receive the Nelson Mandela Award in LA, California, on Glass Terrace Street. And we traveled there, she did a magnificent job, was very well received by the people of California, raised a lot of support money, and I just want you guys to know that she's still moving on and taking care of our business.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Gray, for that announcement. And the petitions are continuing to be circulated, asking citizens to sign a petition in support of Mrs. Amelia Boynton Robinson being given the Presidential Medal of Honor, and we urge citizens to sign up. We are also pleased that this City Council has adopted a resolution that has been sent to the White House, calling upon the President to so give her this outstanding honor. We are hopeful that citizens are gearing up for Selma, not this week, but next week will be the big week, and I hope as many citizens as possible from the Tuskegee area will also participate in the activities from Selma to Montgomery. It's going to be 50th anniversary, and Tuskegee likes Selma, it has a great civil rights history, but we want to join in this activity, because many people from the Tuskegee area also participated in that march from Selma to Montgomery. Okay, we are now prepared. Okay, we are now prepared to go on to the rest of our council agenda. Communications, city council work session. We have Mr. Rowe. Mr. Rowe, you've come a long ways, so again, I want you to make a brief presentation for the benefit of our citizens and our newspaper is here, the Tuskegee News is here, and our citizens are here, about your plan to develop the Federally Qualified Health Centers. And in case you have to get back to gas, we want to give you that, Kirk.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wayne Rowe, who's the president of Father of Life.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, to Tuskegee City Council, to the citizens of Tuskegee, it certainly is a wonderful opportunity to, for Father of Life Health Services to be serving the citizens of Tuskegee and Macon County and the surrounding counties. We operate a primary healthcare center here and providing both medical and dental services. We also have our own pharmacy. And we have come before this great body to ask that we be granted property on the Fund in Montville Street.
It's actually North Church Street and, yeah, off of North Church Street. Next to the post office, let's say it that way.
Next to the post office to construct a facility that will house our new primary healthcare center to provide primary care services that will operate expanded services. We will employ, right now we have 14 employees, we hope to have at least 40 employees. We hope to have this facility operational by the first of next year. And it will not be an expansion, we're not asking for the city to, any money to construct this facility. It will be 20,000 square feet and we hope to continue to serve our patients in this great facility. You will be proud of it and we ask this body for its approval.
What's the profit value of investment?
It will be three and a half billion dollars.
I think that's sufficient, ladies and gentlemen. He has, tell them briefly about your other 21 centers across the state.
We have 21 locations throughout the central, northeastern part of Alabama. We operate out of 18 counties. Our company has been in existence now for 38 years and my name is Wayne Rowe. Again, I serve as the chief executive officer. And we have right now 310 employees that serve our patients. We apply healthcare services to approximately 52,000 patients. We have over 126,000 encounters per year and we do about $5 million a year in drug, free drugs to our patients for our, throughout the network. And there are about 15 programs like ours throughout the state of Alabama.
All right, well, good. He made a presentation to the council on the work session and I just wanted him to share the information with our public, with our citizens. Okay, well, good. Thank you so very much. Let's give him a hand. Thank you so much. You may want to introduce your staff to the public, Mr. Rowe.
Yes, sir. Welcome to our operations officer and then Ms. Robertson, who is the site manager for our Tuskegee site.
That's welcome, Mr. Webb. Thank you so much. We'll go now to boards and commissions and appointments. Historic preservation board, all the council members have a chance to go through it and do you have other names you'd like to add to the commission? I simply want to say, last week, I guess a week or so ago, I had a chance to go down to the state historic commission in Montgomery, Alabama. And there is a lot of money that is spent in this state on historic preservation. There's a lot of money spent on culture tourism. I guess we all can see what is happening to Selma, Alabama. Selma, Alabama has a historic preservation commission. Auburn has one, Opelika has one. Most aggressive cities in our state have these. And why do you have these? Because in order to get money from the historic, historic commission in Alabama, you have to have this certified commission. They'll make funding available that can be used for historic preservation, architecture work, designating of historic districts. You all have a chance to read through the document. Now, first, let me just ask, is the council prepared? Would you like to add? Do you have a list of persons, commission, today? Ma'am? Okay, remember we had a list. Who can get this? One of the deputy clerks, can you all get the list? Well, let me just ask, does the council want, do you have any other names you want to put on it? I think you're a member. We can wait until you get the list and see. Go ahead.
I asked Mr. Mayor at my district meeting last evening if there was anyone else that wanted to be on the commission and I did not get any volunteers and so I'll just keep my original appointee.
Okay, great. Now, the council members may also serve if you like. I mean, it indicated what, one, what, one-fifth of it can be council members, so this is right. So, Mr. Proten, are you interested in serving? Have anyone you'd like to serve?
I may see.
Okay, all right. Council lady Whitey? Would you like to serve?
No additional appointments right now for this clarification. Are we establishing the board for the first time? Or is this just appointed members to the existing?
Now, this is the first time, I think, the city has ever had a historic commission.
Right. And actually, Mr. Mayor, council members, you really have not adopted ordinance establishing commission just yet. But that's still.
But your question was, is this the first time we've ever had?
Well, I was just wondering, you know, if there was a way to be appointing members to the board before the board had been officially established. The first step would need to be establish the board and then come back and appoint the members?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, I was just wanting to give you all another chance to talk about membership and see if any of you all want to serve. Yeah, the first thing would be, did we ever take it off the table? My first thing would be to lift it off the table. And then, once it's off the table, we'll vote to establish it and then third, appoint persons. And so, we were scheduled to begin a historic preservation meeting at University of North Carolina, Raleigh, North Carolina. It was interesting, they called and said that they already have a grant, some money that has been made available to be used in the state of Alabama for historic preservation purposes. And they've been sitting on this grant for some time because no one had really ever come forth from Alabama to request the funds and funding. And this, the University of North Carolina has a renowned center for the study of the American South. And it covers it across the south. They were instrumental in building, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see the B.B. King Museum down in Mississippi, but it is a sight to see. That's one of their resources that they helped to develop. So I could go on and on and on. But this year, I want us to, community, to focus on the fact that Rosa Parks was born in our community. Also, this is 100th anniversary of the death of Booker G. Washington. There's just so much history. We've got the Tuskegee Airmen and the others, we do that all the time. But downtown, we've got historic areas which need to be developed, preserved and developed. If you go downtown, Montgomery, Alabama, it's alive and it's mostly in that old historic district. They've been able to get money to restore those old buildings and sandblast them and they haven't torn them down, they preserve them and develop them. And so many of these cities, the life of that downtown area has worked because they preserve the history and then they bring in an active program of festivals, of music, of events, and all kinds of things, and lighting. It's just, and we can do the same thing in our communities. But in order to get money from the historic commission, you need to have a certified commission. That's all we're trying to do. Yes, ma'am, that would be the first step.
I so moved, Mr. Mayor, that we lift the project off the table so that we may act upon it.
Moved and proper second. Questions come in, I still have your mic on. Moved and proper second by Council Lady Whitey. Questions, comments? Yes?
So, again, if we, once we establish the board, could we leave the appointments open or do we have to set the appointments at the same time? Is that a part of the, and I don't have it in front of me, but the ordinance that sets up the commission, does it require that we name all the board members at this time?
It does not.
Okay. And again, my hesitation really, it's only just because I really wanted to find out everything that I could about this commission. In the past, we have approved an authority of board and I think the council was under the impression it was for one thing and it turned out being another. So that's really, you know, where my hesitation comes from. I agree 100% we need to take advantage of every dollar that's out there for historic preservation. You know, we have more history than anybody in this state as far as I'm concerned. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's before, you know, we were, we got involved and then something else came out of the board that, you know, we weren't aware that was going to happen. So I apologize for, I think we have taped this a couple of times and, you know, I have been the one holding it up, but that's, that's just been my hesitation. So I just wanted to publicly say that.
Thank you, Honorable. Questions, comments? All that made the motion, give the sign of, all right. Opposeds, nay? The motion is carried. So we have it off the table. Now, the proper action would be, Mr. Attorney, to vote to establish the commission.
Mr. Mayor, actually, by, yes, to adopt a ordinance establishing the Tuskegee Historic Preservation Commission. And already we passed the first reading, so this would approve, this would implement your ordinance.
All right. We have a list of the names I want to, council, as I said, councilman, councilman, would you like to serve?
I wouldn't mind serving if we're going to establish.
Okay. You know, those are the names that share them, so I want the public to know who they are. Huh? We had them in there last one. Can you pass them? Boy, just let me read them. Did you make, please make enough copies for all of the council, public and the newspaper. Okay, possible nominees for historic preservation. William Carver Manal, are you still here? Stand up, let's give him a hand. He's involved, he chairs the Carver Festival. And one of the things we were going to learn about today is how to feel on these festivals. So, Febril Holston, professor at TU and also a member of Tuskegee Repertory Theater. We know Febril, she's a professor and an artist. Bill Perry, musician, you know Bill Perry. Lenise Milton, she's an archivist. She keeps the record, the archives, very, very important. Marie La, she is a playwright scholar. Rhonda Callia, professor at TU, represents Mayor Jones from Grambling. Diane Robinson, Ms. Robinson, please stand, let's give her a hand, Tuskegee Repertory Theater. Sandy Taylor, we all know our own Sandy Taylor, she is the superintendent of our park service and does an outstanding job with the National Park Service. She's overall of the parks in this area, Tuskegee Airmen, Selma, Montgomery, et cetera. Major Holland, our distinguished architect. Major Holland, including this building, has designed most of our buildings in town. And last week, I was at the South Central Alabama Development Commission in Montgomery and Major Holland designed that building some 20 years ago, becoming the first African-American architect probably to design a building in Montgomery, Alabama. Vesta Maribel, we know young Vesta Maribel, we wanted to make sure that we had some young person on the committee. And Vesta Maribel is also a part of the Rosa Parks family. The one and only Amelia Mickey Peterson. We all know Mickey and she is a retired educator and just a great artist and performer as well. And Mrs. Ayesh Pinker. Mrs. Pinker is a retired archivist, or is still librarian at the VA Hospital. And as all of you all know, the VA Hospital is a very, very, very important part of our culture. So again, council members, would you like to add, take off any, is this okay, we get started?
Mayor, can the public ask where those names came from?
The city manager made the recommendation and had council members as well. Is anyone, anyone out there in the public would like to serve?
I'd like to serve. Mr. Hayfield, please.
Yes, sir. I was going to ask the mayor to be, just as long as you have this, since we have an uneven number.
Yeah, no, I do. Did you have someone, so Mr. Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Frazier, my man. I would consider serving, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, good, okay. Councilman Lee, would you serve? Okay. Any other council members?
Again, if possible, you know, I think that that list is a great list. Everyone that is on it, as far as I'm concerned, is qualified to serve. But again, at this time, I think that until we, we should, we need to talk more to the council to decide how many people should be on there and if we do want to have additions, if we could just vote to establish the commission and just name, you know, name the members later. And again, I like to go and record, all of those names that have been presented are perfectly bound with me. I think everyone that has been said would be great.
Mr. Attorney, there's no, once, you can add, can the council add names? Can the commission grow?
It can grow, but the council needs to determine how many we're going to have.
Start. So how many you have now? Seventeen? I don't know what. And you had one and you were served. Nineteen. So we got nineteen? Okay. That's fine. Would you like to serve?
Oh, I think I'm serving a little bit more.
Would you like to serve? Yes, sir.
I get the attorney asking you a question, how can we amend this? Because I think the states can start with seven, so we would have to consider amending it starting.
Well, in your original, you wanted to just start with seven?
It actually says no fewer than seven.
No fewer than seven. Yeah, you can go, yeah, remember it's.
And seven, the reason that's there is seven already. It's a pretty sizable number to find. But you should ensure, Mayor and council, that all of these residents of the city.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you do have to be a resident of Tuskegee. Yeah. Okay. All right, so, so you added two more, so you got the nineteen?
Yeah, I would have asked him to view those names and then file, I was talking about residents.
Who, my lord? Oh, Miss Pinker.
I'm supposed to pick her, I don't know if she's in.
Yeah, we had next, oh, Miss Pinker, a long time ago. Vesta, uh, his home, I don't know if he's moved or not, Vesta, where is Vesta there?
He was reassigned.
Oh, he, he, oh, they reassigned Vesta?
I'd say we need to take time and check it to release it, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, um, you wanna set it for nineteen, or set, set, wanna set the number for nineteen and then, um, you can start with this and add to it.
Yes.
Well, let's, um, let's do this. Where are we, Mr. Attorney? We have actually, uh, got the.
You have.
I know, we have. Well, the chairman likes to consider a motion that we establish nineteen, does that sound? Please, does that sound? And they are public on there that we can, like Vesta, he's not, so that creates another vacancy, but we can establish nineteen?
For voting purposes, for instance, um, if we had a board of nineteen people, like require a majority vote, or, you know, it be just the majority of the forum that comes, because with a board that big, it's gonna take a, it's gonna take a lot of votes to get a majority to get anything done. So that would be the only concern if I have it that big, have a number that's that big for the commission. Just like if you had a council of nineteen, it'd be a lot more difficult, you know, in the sense of something like that, so.
Sometimes it is, and sometimes it isn't. But the point is, what they tried to ask you to do is get people who have some specific, you know, expertise, who is interested in historic preservation. But I think, you know, a board of a hundred people can work if they're all concerned about truly preserving our history and working for the benefit of Tuskegee. I don't think the number matters. So nineteen, I think it'll work.
I just think we need to do a little bit more work amongst ourselves to figure out exactly what we're gonna do with this commission.
Well, uh, Council, you are, um, is this, if, if, listen, let me just say this, if the council is not ready to move on, it's fine. We have the motion before us, I mean, I mean, the item is on the floor now, and you have a question about, um, the size, it's nineteen, is what we are suggesting. What would you like to do, honorable council?
Have we not passed the ordinance? Mr. Speaker, we did pass one, I'm sorry. Should we?
Oh, sorry. The first thing we did was move to take it off.
All right, so we read, so this is the first reading, second reading?
Oh, this is second reading, oh, this is the second.
We didn't vote. I mean, that's the sort of people that just vote the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, all right, well, the chairman's. Okay, all right, the chairman, the motion that we establish the historic preservation board.
So move.
Move and proper second. Questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, give a sound of "aah." Oppose's name, Sophie. Now, how many members?
That's what we need, I think, come back to at the next meeting.
All right, good. We'll come back at the next meeting, uh, but at least, I'll tell the folks to get ready because we're gonna be asking for some money.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can we ask that the city clerk send us an email, um, with potential numbers and with at least they've already had, so therefore we'll be ahead of the process of that, understanding what kind of numbers we're getting. She polled us in terms of what we recommend.
Oh, oh, how many we want?
Yeah, so we would already be ahead of the game.
Oh.
She would have been.
Okay, you got that, Madam Clerk? Okay, good. All right, well, very good. Okay. Um, yeah, when I look at downtown Montgomery, you see how they've got money allowing us to fix up Dexter Avenue just for this one event? I mean, it, it, I mean, and, uh, so I don't wanna miss this money. Okay, um, the other one is the medical clinic board. Now, council, here again, what Mr. Rowe talked about was primary care. And there's a difference, as you know, between primary care, which is what, uh, Thomas Reed Center provides, primary care, and Mr. Rowe provides, primary care. Now, what we're talking about here with the medical clinic board is urgent care. That, that means if you have a heart attack, get shot, get cut, urgent, something life-threatening, you need some help, now you need to have a place to come to stabilize you quickly, urgent care. And I wanna commend Quality of Life, or yesterday I was down in the shopping center, I saw them open, and, and I want to announce to the public that Quality of Life is open, uh, tonight, most of the week, and on Saturdays, they are also open to twelve. But prime, for they, that's primary care. What we're talking about now is urgent care. And so the city manager and Mr. Samuel, I know the two of them, uh, talked today, you all are gonna get together tomorrow. Uh, they've also spoken to Bobby Davies at the bank about, um, financing this project. And what is being proposed for the council is not, um, to make a financial contribution, but instead, have the council and utility board stand behind the project. The project, um, will stand on its own. We're talking about, um, this project being a project of the medical clinic board, which is a public, non-profit board, and, um, it would have a responsibility for overseeing this project. So, uh, Mr. City Manager, um, Howard, what, where are we generally now on the project, council? I want you to repeat where we are.
Presently, we, presently, we are looking at a, uh, financial infeasibility study that was done back in June, 2014. So what we're gonna do now is take, take that package and update it, and take some of the numbers on the issue, to assess some financial projections on, on how the feasibility of them paying back the loan in a certain period of time, like three to five months. So the, uh, the loan, as you said, will be made to the medical clinic board, and the city, if council approves that, will backstop it, along with the city and utility board. Uh, Dr. Sterling, uh, in terms of his contribution to the project, uh, he is attempting to get his life credit, will the bank also fund his contribution. The contribution that the medical clinic board is making is just for the facility. And the immediate start of equipment that the clinic would need to provide urgent care. And as far as the personnel, uh, those expenses, those costs will be paid from the, from operations and Dr. Sterling's, uh, capital injection.
Okay, so at the next council meeting, you and Mr. Samuel will have something in writing.
Yes, sir.
That's what the council asked for in the last meeting, is put it to writing, okay, so we can get it, uh, have something to consider. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. City Manager, I don't know about my other colleagues, but I'm a little confused because didn't Dr., uh, can you, didn't, no, I'm sorry, Dr. Rowe say that it wouldn't cost us anything? This is somebody.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So who, who we, now, tell me about this. This is urgent care, we talk about too many medical things.
No, no, you can't never talk about too much medical.
Tell me what's going on there.
Because initially, we need to talk about a hospital.
Tell me what's going on, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, the, uh, this is the, Rowan, Mr. Rowe was talking about building a center.
Okay, that's, um, sure, that's not costing us anything.
That's not costing us anything. What's the line?
Right.
Now, the urgent care center, which is different, they will be located in the Central Alabama Conference of Health building, as it stands now. And they will have a meeting with them, uh, medical clinic board, and Dr. McTeen of the, at the, in the center, he owns the building, the center, company, companies of health. So that's where the urgent care center will be located. That will cost us, uh, in terms of support, we will be backing the loan that will be made to the, uh, medical clinic board.
So no cash out, just to sign, in other words, like you do when you're buying, so we will, we will be putting up a certain amount of guarantee.
Yes.
And what's that figure again?
The, the total figure is a hundred and forty-five thousand. We are proposing to share that with the utility board, that will be up seventy-two-five, and the utility board, seventy-two-five.
Honorable council members, let me just say that, Mr. City Manager, what you need to do is go ahead, you and Mr. Samuel, put this in writing and present it to the council. Because what we're talking about are two different projects.
I got you.
Okay, this one is urgent care, and we're not talking about the city putting up any money, instead, backing up the project, which is something that will benefit our, our community. Who knows, any one of us could have a heart attack, a stroke, or fall down and hurt ourselves and need urgent care. So, um, and the need has already been established, we've studied this issue over and over and over again.
Yeah.
But you need to put something in writing, okay? So that's, why don't we just, just wait until he, he has it in writing for us? Now, Mr. Protem, you wanted to put on the Thomas Reed Center, the Macon County Healthcare Authority, so let's move to that item now. This, dealing with healthcare.
Mr. Mayor, I've asked the Macon County Healthcare Authority, they want to express an appreciation of something regarding.
Oh, okay, great.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, Mr. Attorney, Mr. City Manager, and Madam City Clerk, greetings. I stand before you tonight on behalf of the Macon County Healthcare Authority, my fellow board members, and I would like to publicly thank you for your decision to support the efforts to grant quality healthcare to Macon County in the form of the requested contribution to increase services by increasing physicians. This contribution will go toward extending primary care service hours within the county at the Thomas Reed Amortory Care Center from Monday through Friday, 8:00 PM, and half day on Saturday. What does this mean to this county? Citizens will now be able to schedule much-needed doctor office visits around the schedule that will work best for them, especially for those who may work nine to five, and only have evenings and Saturdays for those much-needed visits that will increase a healthier community. We would like to note that these will be primary care hours, as the mayor said earlier, which is different from urgent and emergency care hours. Urgent care means services that you can receive during non-business hours, such as from 5:00 PM to midnight. An emergency room, which is different than urgent care, will require more certifications and standards, and is something we are looking forward to in the future. Certainly, currently, there is only one standalone emergency room in the state of Alabama, which is located in Birmingham. That facility is currently fighting many lawsuits and certification issues. The Macon County Healthcare Authority goal is to keep abreast of that facility and see how they overcome their challenges. From that, we can learn how to avoid those pitfalls and eventually be able to have a standalone emergency room in Macon County. We would also like to publicly state that the authority's main objective is the highest quality healthcare for all the citizens of Macon County. Therefore, we stand ready, willing, and able to embrace and support efforts to bring the best healthcare to this county. A speech therapist was just recently added at the services to the Thomas Reed Center, and this will be available to all service providers, such as Tuskegee University, Quality of Life, and Dr. Molly Walker, and others, to refer their patients for services to that facility. We are encouraged by their excitement and interest in this accessibility. Therefore, we continue to encourage the development of communication between healthcare-related entities within the county to work on bringing the best and highest quality of services. In that vein, we want to inform the council that any information, support, and/or partnerships where the authority can be of help, we stand ready to do so. Again, we are here to bring the best of services with the highest quality, starting with best physicians, nurses, technicians, state-of-the-art equipment, and the environment to ensure a healthy Macon County. Again, we say to you, thank you.
And thank you. Let's give him a hand. That's a great document, we'll share copies with the council, that would be great. You can get it to us, please.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right, so, uh, to all the members of the council, so you see, we can't have too much healthcare, the key is working together and coordinating everything together. So we're talking about primary care, we're talking about urgent care, and who knows, ultimately, we may be talking about a standalone emergency, etc. But we really need it. These other, Bullock County can have a hospital, facility, so we can as well. So let's keep that as a long-term goal as well. Members, yes, sir?
I would ask that we, as our healthcare service providers, to give us an update at our next meeting, perhaps sometime soon, on the status of ambulance services, so we can understand what kind of ambulance services we have here, along with the EMTs. That gives us a better idea of what to do in event something serious occurs, as we said, we don't have, and we may have people capable of doing it, immediately until we can transport us. I'd like to get an idea there, you know, in future times.
Are you asking us to do that, or you bring your report?
Yes, if you can bring that report and along with the other agencies, if you can get information from them as well, with our fire department, police department. So we will be updated, what do we do in case of, who do we call, what are our capabilities? So I know we have to, if we get the emergency care services here.
We do, and, um, I think, did we meet the other day with the ambulance van, the other ambulance person? We talked to him on the phone. Oh, yeah, got him on the conference, yes, I said. Yeah, we have one ambulance service here now, stationed at the old company incident building, and another one has expressed some interest. But let me just say to the public, if you ever have a emergency, don't hesitate to call the fire department. We don't have EMTs like we used to, but I can tell you, those guys are real good, uh, they're real good, Mr. Uh, Mr. City Manager. And, uh, they, they'll be happy to check your pressure and, you know, whatever is necessary. And also, the ambulance services, though they are stationed here, you can go by there or they'll come and see about you. Okay, um, so, uh, let's go down to, see if we can move this along. Any other announcements? Let's go to TU, SGA, other agencies, communications, etc. Ignan, City Manager, Communication, Mr. City Manager? Ignan, City Manager Communication, Mr. City Manager. Council updates, street maintenance, city council concerns. I just want to go on to your financial report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening, citizens.
Yes, sir.
I think at this point, the motion on the club is, oh, take the club basis.
Okay, so, what's, Mr. Attorney, what do we have on that? Oh, yeah, the motion to close for two weeks, give them time, time to get together and study and see what we need to do, and come back and deal with it. Right, okay. That motion is now on the floor.
I'd like to amend my motion, amend my motion to include the two-week closing period for club basis.
Okay, moved and brought the second. Questions, comments? Those that pay the motion, give a sign of eye.
Aye.
Pose his name, so be it. Motion is carried. So, Mr. City Manager, you are moving on that. In two weeks, uh, we'll be prepared to do what we need to do. Uh, the, I, we want to just go to your financial reports, or whatever.
Okay. We can go to the financial report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, before you do that, uh, you can mind, Mr. Mayor, entertain the motion to, uh, set, if necessary, set for a, uh, hearing any action that, you know, the council may decide to take. You may not need to, on the club.
On the club, right.
All right. I want you to go here and take this action just in case.
Yeah.
So, it won't be delayed.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion that we also designate, say, uh, six-thirty, uh, that should get us down to that point of six-fifteen as a, uh, public hearing on this club issue.
Well, not a public hearing, this will just be a hearing for the club.
A hearing for the club, right.
You really should not be at your council meeting time because it's going to take more than four fifteen minutes.
Okay. Can we set the hearing for five o'clock on that day?
Let me do that.
Uh, five-thirty?
Yes, sir.
That's the worst session, is that five-thirty? How about five o'clock? That's fine. That's fine, okay. Okay, moved and brought the second. Uh, wait a minute, who, who made the motion?
This is the city attorney. This will be a hearing with the club owners for a public... I think you said no public hearing. What, what was your suggestion?
It's a hearing for the club. Uh, it is not a private hearing, but it's not a public, public hearing in the sense of, you remember when you, uh, convened your city council meeting, then at a certain point, you, uh, interrupted so that you could hear public comments?
Uh-huh.
This would not be that kind of a meeting, but it would be a meeting to get facts out concerning the club and what you want to do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Public is invited, uh, but it's a council scheduled hearing for the club.
Okay, so we want to set that for five P.M., uh, two weeks hence, uh, for the hearing. Okay, five P.M.? Chair will entertain a motion, it moved by, moved second. Second by, uh, Lee, questions, comments? Those that pay the motion, give a sign of eye.
Aye.
Pose his name, so be it. The motion is carried. Okay? Proceed, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the council updates, uh, street management, uh, city council concerns, we did receive a listing from, uh, Alabama Gas releasing some of the houses that we anticipate, uh, demolishing. So, those houses are free now, and we can go into, uh, demolition doors.
About how many? I'm just curious.
About twenty.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
And on Clark Street, Mr. Mayor, please, at the last minute.
Did Mr. Roosevelt Hall make it in? Oh, he is here.
What, it, it's not, I wonder about that house on Washington Avenue, we're going to keep mentioning. Gas company have anything to do with that across the... It's great. Is it on the list?
Uh, not yet.
All right, Mr. Hall, uh, Councilman Lee had a presentation. The council had a presentation for you. Come on around, sir.
Everybody, let's first give Mr. Roosevelt Hall a hand. Uh, I'm taking this opportunity to highlight, uh, some good work by citizens of District One. Um, and it's something that many of our citizens might do on a daily basis, but I think that we need as a council to recognize, uh, acts in the community that benefit the community as a whole. Uh, Mr. Hall is a resident of District One, he lives on Clark Avenue. And he had an issue there where it's some leaves in the street. And maybe he can tell you a little bit more about what was going on. But Mr. Hall took it, uh, upon himself to clear up those leaves, and I'm proud to know that, uh, that the city manager told me today that they did come and finally pick up those leaves. So, I don't know if you got a chance to see that before you left and come to leave today, today and picked them up, but we just wanted to recognize Mr. Hall, and I wanted to present him, our action that Mayor swore would present him with this resolution. Okay? And, uh, it's, it's basically saying that he's a resident of District One, and we wanted to recognize him for raking up leaves and picking up the trash, and for making Tuskegee a better place to live, so.
Oh, no. First of all, thank God. First of all, uh, sometimes we, uh, look at things small, tiny, and take it for granted. But when you see, uh, when you see some assistance in our community, sometimes you have to do things on your own. You can't just wait, Jesus Christ went about doing it. He didn't, He didn't intend on you about the God. And when God told you, tell you to do something, you do it. Obey the best sacrifice. In a few times, God tell you something, you do just that. Because I didn't realize, I confess you. When you, when the God tell you to do, don't worry about the situation. Time to tell, I tell, something said, keep on doing it. Whatever I seen in, I don't know. I clean up St. John's Church too. Mr. Tellus, he knew where the vehicle, the truck, where that vehicle, and so many times, I come up, don't think help me. That ain't all about me, whether it's all about you, Lord, and Jesus Christ. And they say, oh, that being the first, the one of, the ones that tied me on the throne, it's our ass, like, enemy, and, and me, the beginning, first and last, what God used to come, the whole man. So, I think, Lord, thank, and, uh, the lady right there, you stand up, see the one, uh, see the one, just wait, uh, see, in the back, see the one, uh, with, uh, that's her. Uh, so, in, first, first, do this town, city, and if you can help somebody, neighborhood, a community, you do so. And let God be the one, He'll pay. When you let your God say, He, He the one to do the pain, I thank you. Don't stop this, keep on doing it.
And I would like to thank Ms. Patton as well. She's the one that, that brought these good words to my attention. And we would ask anybody else in the community, if you see somebody going beyond the call of duty to make the city a better place, let us know, because we, we, there are plenty of other people in this community that need to be recognized, and hopefully that'll encourage everyone else to do our part, uh, like Mr. Hall and others are doing. So, thank you, Ms. Patton, and thank you, Mr. Hall.
All right. Again, thank you, sir. Give him another hand. Thank you, Councilman Lee, for bringing that, uh, presentation to us. Uh, proceed, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, next item on the City Manager's communication is the financial report for the city of Tuskegee for the month of January thirty-one, twenty fifteen. You should have a copy of the report in your council package. And, uh, in the report, uh, which is about twenty-one pages, you will, you will see the, uh, monthly financial report summary and analysis. I will go through that section of the report, and, uh...
Let me just ask this. Uh, did you all get it ahead of time? On time? Did you have a chance to go through it? But you did get, oh, Mr. Pro Tem, did you get it ahead of time? I mean, on time. Councilwoman Whitehead, Mr. Lee, does anyone have any questions? Uh, suggestions, or comments, or whatever? Take your time.
The top ten revenues, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to the top ten.
That was page fourteen. The, year to date, January twenty fifteen, we are down to seven sixty-nine, five eighty on the occupation license. Is that, um... Is that a substantial drop? Is that actually, is that much of a drop for this period?
Occupation, exactly.
Oh, uh, yes.
Fourteen, page fourteen.
From nine oh four, seven hundred in previous year.
Right.
To seven sixty-nine, five eight.
That's for the year?
Yes.
So, we had a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar drop.
Absolutely. Now, you know what that due to? Change in the administration at the university.
University.
Quite a few people got, uh, laid off. They decreased our occupation taxes.
Thank you. The, um, gasoline tax, you don't have to know what our gasoline tax is if the city gets it on a percent basis.
Is that three? Four? Four, okay. Three is two, and then, right, see, I was doing the gasoline taxes when I come from the state. This is something from our four cent.
Right, our four cent.
And they send it to, uh, our health.
I mean, you have to know what percentage we get. I was just trying to establish, ask, I was asking about how much we pay gasoline tax. Is it just four percent?
Right.
Are there any other fees we pay, tax related to that?
No.
Okay.
Not gasoline.
I was, you don't mind, I'd like to check, um, your office, the, uh, Chief Financial Office, Finance Office, so we can get that clear with us. People say we pay more in terms of our gasoline prices because of the taxes. And I have asked, and someone got it clear before, that it's not about just the taxes here in Tuskegee. So, we're getting a black eye at the city, saying that our taxes are so high is the reason our gasoline is so high. So, I'll come back to get that information from you to share with the citizens, so we can put this up once and for all. And there's some citizens who are really upset about the difference in the gasoline prices that we pay here in Tuskegee and Macon County, particularly Tuskegee as compared to other communities, even outside of the county. And they were saying that the city's gasoline tax is so much higher than theirs. So, I just wanted to get that clarified, and I'll follow up with you, make sure we put that out, so citizens will know that our gasoline tax is not the reason that the price of gas is so high in Tuskegee. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Well, one of the reasons is, is that, uh, the company that is selling gas in the city of Tuskegee has not.
Well, I understand, you got that.
You understand that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's, that's the bottom line. That's really the bottom line. But the, uh, for the municipality, yes, it's pretty standard in the...
It's four cent?
Yeah, it's, that's pretty standard across the state.
That don't count for the twenty to thirty cent difference between ours and Tuskegee.
Right. And he's right, it's a monopoly. That's why we're so happy, we'd be so happy to get that twenty-four-seven shell stationed on, uh, exit thirty-eight, exit thirty-eight. And, um, incidentally, Mr. Potter signed his option today, and, uh, so they moved right ahead on exit thirty-eight, project.
Now, I found a question, there's a total increase in revenue for the period. Well, I found, so there's a total increase in revenue for the period, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's the total increase in the top ten.
The top ten revenues. You count the ninety percent, that's the period of the year ending.
Any other questions, uh, suggestions on the financial report? Read through it, honorable council members, uh, continue to read through it, and if you see any questions, uh, please let the city manager know, or let us know, and try to, uh, get them answered. If there are no further questions, the chair will entertain a motion that we receive the financial report. Moved by Councilman Lee. Seconded by Councilwoman Whitehead, questions, comments? Those that pay the motion, give a sign of eye. Pose his name, so be it. Next item, Mr. Head Start Report.
The next item on the agenda, on the City Manager's communication is the executive director report on the Head Start program. Uh, she's not here tonight, so I just, uh...
Mr. City Manager.
Go over the, uh, summary of her report there. I can see some of the activity that went on in the Head Start, uh, program.
Mr. City Manager, is there anything we need to vote on for Head Start? It's a good report, we had a chance to go through it.
Yeah, nothing wrong.
Nothing, no action we need to take? Okay, well, you can just sum it up.
The, the summary there, you can see a assortment of items that they went through. Program met its funded enrollment of, uh, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine children. Program continued to experience challenges with attendance. Reasons are being documented and properly followed, being maybe with parents in addition to attendance threatened as of being implemented. Perfect attendance certificates and record, uh, recognition. Okay, well, there are various reasons why the, uh, the enrollment is down. Lot of kids have been in Tuskegee, going to school, and all in Montgomery. So, they leave here. School is open in the, uh, six for holiday break. Just, uh, the director and financial manager attended a class for leadership training on the twenty-second, twenty-third in Montgomery.
So, the city manager, good report.
Good report.
Uh, okay. Do you have any, uh, point person for Head Start, anything to add?
Just that, uh, we will have our council, policy council meeting on tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, at six o'clock, at the Head Start Office Building.
Great.
And I will come back with a full report on how we're coming with the new plans.
Head Start, everything is good. Okay, Chair will entertain a motion that we receive the Head Start reports. Moved by Councilman Lee.
Seconded.
Seconded by Pro Tem, questions, comments? Those that pay the motion, give a sign of eye. Pose his name, so be it. Keep up the good work, Head Start. Employee, at this time, we have several employee recognition, Mr. Mayor. All right, we're ready.
I'm Nicky Char, the partner, this is, this is Mother Shad. I don't think she's here as a member.
She's our manager, uh, City Manager, the mayor, City Council. Her absence is a first-year resident student at Tuskegee University. She has been lashed tonight, and she was unable to be here, but she asked an accent for the entrance.
Ready? Maybe have a ring-a-bye and introduce the, ring-a-bye, Mayor's office, and we can congratulate him. Have a question, the Pro Tem has a question. She's not a director, huh? Intern. Okay, which department?
Head start.
Oh, okay, all right, great. So...
Uh, the next person, for years of service, everybody knowing, Mr. Sylvester McPherson. Uh, next person for years of service, everybody knowing, Mr. Sylvester McPherson, 30 years of service.
Uh, thank you, the communicator, come on around. Dr. Tyner, you want to come and join? Come on around. Bring him in, Mel, here. Dr. Tyner. Come on in. Come on in, everyone.
I want to give him the communicator, say that way, all right? Thank you kindly. I, you know, I am just a lady, and I'm honored tonight to have shared 30 years of service with the great city of Tuskegee. They tolerate with me 30 years. And I thank God for that. And I, I seen a lot of transition in the program that I served in from the time that I've been here. As I reminisce, just the other day, I realized at the time that I started, every senior that was here then is going on now to the great beyond. And that's been blessing in this program that we've been able to see and been led by the three Directors. First came in under the leadership of late Mr. Joanne Newt. And as she made her transition, then we began to serve under Mrs. Jeanette Alexander. And now, we are now serving under Dr. Florence Tyner. And I know that I worked my end with and under Dr. Tyner. So when I get ready to conclude, I'm hoping that Dr. Tyner still be in the program seat. So I thank God for 30 years. God bless all of you.
Communicator, all right. You really touched the hearts of so many people, Sylvester. Those seniors you serve and also through your radio ministry.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Give him another hand. The one and only Sylvester McPherson. And thank you, Dr. Tyner, for the job you're doing with our seniors. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Natural certification, Mr. Mayor. Uh, is Human Resources Director, Mizero Goodalas, certified professional in human resources. She received a certificate from the HR Certification Institute. Which states that Mizero Goodalas having met with distinction, the high standards of education, experience, and demonstrated knowledge established by this institution, has been certified as a professional in human resources. Mizero Goodalas.
Let's see about, let's see if we can get these published, all these in the newspaper. Uh, one we didn't know about, the Chief.
Chief, uh, couldn't make it tonight. We'll, we'll put him on another program.
Okay, there was. Oh, 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 yeah. You're just kidding. Chief, we never know when y'all are serious. Are we ready? We ready to move on to something else? Oh, I thought we were going to bend the Chief or something?
Yes, we are.
Well, come on up here. You can do it while you're alive, while we're in the... Huh? Oh, yo, you didn't bring the plaque, plaque. All right, the bar Ericus, let's just take the picture. Come on, let's get, let's do this. The Chief, we'll take a picture. You don't, you don't have to show the plaque. I mean, I mean, she'll lend you a plaque. Come on, let's do this. It's not every day that the Chief of Police of the City of Tuskegee, Alabama, where is it on here, resolution? I don't know. Where's the old, oh, you don't have it on? Oh, we have, oh, it's the, oh, the older one, took it off. Okay, yeah, here we go. Police Department, Chief Lester Patrick, certified... Oh, Chief. Chief. Oh, it's in the car? All right, okay, all right. I don't want to, I'll give you... Okay, all right, let's go to the others. Okay. All right, let's go to these others. Uh, use, oh, the use of the land, quite a fight.
I said that's it, I'm a servant.
Okay.
For some service conditions. Okay, announcements, uh... Let me make this last announcement from Governor Benning. He declares a state of emergency due to possible warmer weather conditions for the state of Alabama. And the state of emergency order will go into effect Wednesday at 6:00 a.m. And will cover all counties in Alabama. So, uh, we have a state of emergency in effect tomorrow starting at 6:00 a.m.
Oh, okay, we expect a ice.
Right. And I want the general public to know that we do have warming centers in the city of Tuskegee. Uh, one at the fire department, the police department, and right here in the community area. So we have blankets and snacks and something hot for you. If that happens.
Okay. Mayor, is that, is that on, any of those lights we had the extreme conditions, are they the same locations?
Right.
Someone asked me the other night, I referred to here.
Same places, we have blankets and everything here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the City Manager's communication is what? Uh, and we don't get the statement of economic interest forms that had to be filed by April 30th. That's all public officials and employees who make $50,000 or better. Electoral officials. Okay. An ordinance, now let's go down to the U.S. land, that's an ordinance. Uh, this is going to be the first reading. I trust everyone have a copy of it in front of them.
Mr. Attorney, you just want to explain what we have, the first reading.
Yes, yes. Mr. Mayor, you have in front of you a proposed ordinance declaring, uh, the property that's between, that's behind the post office and where Southern Building sits. So it's, it's on Church Street between Elm and Farmville, behind the post office. It will be declaring this, uh, written state, no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the mayor and city council to execute a warranty deed to the property of life health services upon certain conditions to be determined by the council. Uh, this, uh, you discussed it at your last reading, and the proper procedure would be to first have a reading today and then to vote on it at a subsequent reading. But the way that the town teams dispose of property that they don't believe is by first declaring that it's no longer needed for municipal purposes. Okay, I will answer any questions.
Okay, so this is our first reading. Okay, honorable council members, okay, put it on the agenda for vote at the next council.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One request that I think you mentioned in the last meeting, that if you put it in, that that would be referred to calls so that if the property is not usable, the purposes mentioned, it would revert back to the city.
Right.
And it would have a certain period of time in which to initiate that. So I'd like your question that if, uh, one year period, you put it there to initiate it, and if at any time it's not used for that specific purpose, that it revert back to the city for the termination. If it's not useful, that public health purposes is intended.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Got that, Mr. Attorney? Melissa, okay. All right. Good, good suggestion, because you made that suggestion last. Okay. All right, um, so we're clear with, with that. And we heard the presentation by Mr. Rowe this evening about what he proposes to use the land for. Okay, uh, proceed, Mr. Management, next item.
Mayor, I have a resolution. We have Resolution 201544. This, uh, resolution is addressing the, uh, economic and community development plan covering FYI 2015 and FYI through FYI 24. This resolution is, uh, asking the council to approve a, uh, contract between a consultant to assist, uh, the city and Economic Development Department in obtaining funding for the various initiatives that we have set out for economic development. This consultant has, uh, experience. She's done work in Tuskegee. This, uh, Natasha Brown. And she will be, uh, doing her consulting services for a period of one year for $500. Uh, and for each grant that she gets approved, we would negotiate a fee for her from, at that point. But at this point, we, uh, want to get council approved for the, uh, contract between her and the city of Tuskegee.
And we would negotiate, uh, a fee that would come out of the grant.
Out of the grant.
Out of the grant. Okay, yes, Yara.
Uh, to my colleagues, Mr. City Manager, I am very familiar with, uh, Ms. Natasha, and I cannot think, and I've worked at most of these places where she has done successful work, and all of her grants were granted. I can't think of one that was denied. I'm familiar with her work, and she's an excellent grant right now. And she's received several awards for that.
Okay, so would you make a motion, Yara?
I don't know if anybody else would.
Oh, so before any other discussion?
Is there a fee designated in the contract?
This present contract, $500 for one year.
I mean, is there a fee provided, something explained, is that fee designated?
No.
That's why you're going to negotiate that at the time that the grant is awarded. Remember, we got that grant for police cars, and there was some concern about how much, you know? And so we debated and finally came up with something. But at any rate, if you want to try to establish something for today, that's fine. Or, actually, you know, there is, in, in most every grant, there's, uh, uh, and outland, there's space in there for consulting. Taking assistance. You can determine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I am in order, I'd like to...
Yes, you are.
Make the motion that we accept the, uh, proposal from the draft consulting agreement.
With Ms. Natasha Brown?
With Ms. Natasha Brown.
Chair will entertain a second.
Mr. Mayor, even before you get a second, if you don't, if I, if I didn't require a question, but the, uh, the, the better motion would be to authorize execution of an agreement, uh, between the city and the consultant, uh, rather than accepting this proposal, because there are several paragraphs that, uh, that should be worked through. For instance, agreeing to venue in Park County, Georgia.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Could we then just accept it with the understanding that the details will be worked out with the attorney? And adopted in principle, that's $500 a year. And attorney, you, obviously, you should have done this with the City Manager prior to always trying to manage the attorney first. But, uh, can we do it that way?
I can amend that. To, uh, authorize the execution of the agreement.
Of that agreement.
Of, yes, of this agreement.
Not necessarily this one, but an agreement between the two parties.
Okay.
It'll be essential for here, but there's some paragraphs that are...
Okay, and we can work out.
I second the motion. Motion on the floor that we...
Question. Okay, I'm in support of the motion, and I'm made with this, uh, this... Round rice. The rounds, which, uh, what I would like to have some kind of stipulation as to what the, uh, fee would be upon any acquisition of contract. Since we have a maximum level for contract money. Because if we can get a, write a grant, give that amount of money, if the fee is 10%, that could be way above what it's going to pay. So I would like to see that we establish a percentage, uh, that's reasonable percentage, standing percentage.
You, you have taken mine, you want to do that now?
No, I mean, they could be, the city manager can come back and make some suggestions too.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I just got the math made that, uh, a minimum fee would be $1,500 and a maximum, uh, $3,000, and that depends on the size of the money.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Percentage, if I can support it. Okay, okay. Did you get that? Did you get it? Uh, you, he, she's going to amend it to include that.
Right.
Okay? All right? So, uh, it is removed and amended and seconded. Questions, comments? All that pay the motion, give a sign of eye. Poses nay, so be it. You got it? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
The next resolution, uh, Resolution 2015-45 is also addressing economic development and is dealing with marketing materials, uh, to, uh, develop a, uh, a package that will, uh, display the, the various assets of the city of Tuskegee in, in, in terms of, uh, our historicalness, properties that we would, uh, we have available for economic development. Just a pictorial, you can see that in your packet there, a model southern community. Just a pictorial, you can see that in your package there, a model southern community and great place to do business, visit and live. It's going to have a few features on the airport and some of the businesses located here in Tuskegee, exit 38. The whole ramification of economic development will be put in a package.
Okay.
Please on our website.
Where? On our website, when? All right, listen, the chair will entertain a motion that we adopt these resolutions. This one, this is 201545. Yes, sir. The marketing material. Move by white here, second by move. Questions, comments? Those that favor the motion, give a sign of aye. Poses name, so be it. Well done. Excellent. 1536, resolution.
1536 is, you've already approved that resolution.
Oh, yeah.
I think the wording, council had a problem with the wording and the wording has been changed to meet his satisfaction.
Okay, so do we need any additional action? Chair will entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution with the amended wording or the new wording. That right? Does this satisfy the motion? Is it satisfied? All right, chair will entertain a motion. Move by the pro team, all seconded. Questions, comments? Those that favor the motion, give a sign of aye. Poses name, so be it. Next one.
The last, last resolution, 201546. This is a memorandum of understanding between Tuskegee University and the city of Tuskegee, the senior citizen program. What this memorandum of understanding does is create a relationship between the university and the city in terms of them taking their occupational therapy program and using those individuals to come out to assist the senior citizens in various activities. Dr. Tyron is here and she will explain a little more in detail what the program is going to do for the citizen, for the senior citizens. Dr. Tyron.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Harvey Smith, city clerk, and attorney Grant. On behalf of the citizens of the Tuskegee Senior Citizen Program, I'd like for you all to understand the process of having these students to engage in the activities with our seniors. Being that research is important and has been proven, the well-being of our citizens and the longevity of their lives are extended due to physical activities. So what the students will do, they have a educational component and Dr. Shakir teaches the class occupational therapy with other adults. And they will deal with chronic illnesses, cancer, arthritis, diabetes. And the classes will, and the students will come in and engage with the seniors to talk with them about fall prevention, how to make it safe in their homes, things such as that. Also, they will have them doing leisure activities to help them strengthen their cognitive and their limitation skills. The physical and cognitive assessment is something that will allow them to be more enthused about doing what they do on a daily basis. So we're excited and we're looking forward to it and we pray and hope that you all will see the results. Thank you.
Well done, well done. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion, Resolution 201547. Move by the pro team. Second by council lady move. Questions, comments? Mr. Attorney, go here.
Mr. Mayor, in, in, well, it's just that the language in the memorandum of understanding itself needs some work and so it should be approved or adopted subject to...
Move, subject to review by attorney and review as necessary, be it by the attorney.
Thank you. Move by the pro team. Second by council lady move. Questions, comments? Attorney will put the final legal touches on it. Questions, comments? Being none. Those that favor the motion, please give a sign of aye. Poses name, so be it. Mr. Attorney, I mean, Mr. City Manager.
That concludes the city manager's report, Mr. Mayor.
Count me in. Yes, Your Honor.
I am prepared to about the economic development brochure package. This package is going to cost us $8,427. That's going to be a package. A brochure package to go out, $8,000. Why is this so expensive?
Well, it's, I can tell you about the rate on what they, what they charge, but it's, it's, the package is going to be, it's well put together. It's going to be distributed all over the state. I own the internet.
But don't we have somebody on staff? Don't we have somebody on staff to do this type of thing? Is that a good idea? Is that on staff? I mean, don't we have people here in the city?
Yes.
That can do this type of stuff?
Yes, if they have time in their schedules.
When, when was that? That's, that's a part of the package?
Yeah, I had...
Food for madness.
We are, I think we did move a little fast on that. I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with the proposal, but I would at least, you know, think that we, the council would deserve a presentation on what exactly is going to be done. I've seen, I've seen the brochures that he's done. I think that, you know, they are of good quality and everything like that, but I just think that, you know, whenever we're spending money like that.
Why don't we just have a presentation done now for council?
Well, we, we should just ask some quotes, quite frankly, and maybe some others in town who can do likewise. Mr. Harper, you have a comment? This is your...
Yes, yes, I do. And you're talking about, when you say a package, you're talking about quite a quantity of booklets and brochures. They're two different publications involved here. The first is the 12-page Economic Development Bulletin. I wrote all the copy in there, so yes, we have somebody here who can do the writing part of it as far as the production, development part of it, as far as laying it out, as far as coordinating publication of it, and as far as providing $300 copies of it. That's, it would cost us lots more to try to do it ourselves, I guarantee you. That's just one of the brochures that we're talking about here. They're two different brochures. We have a need in the city also to let people know where they need to go for business services. So the second part of the business is a tri-fold. It looks like this, that welcomes you to the city, it gives you business assistance, what types of loans, what types of assistance is given through the city, who our, our business, our officials are, our city departments, who they, who to contact people are, where you can find them separately. That's an additional quantity that we use, that we have copies there. We have 5,000 copies of the tri-fold that we will distribute. We have 3,000 copies of the Economic Development Bulletin. These are things that we need to be first quality and unprofessional in. So when we go to shows and we go to call on respective businesses, we have professional materials to show them.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. I, I missed his tone. Sorry, I missed it. What I think, I would hope the council would do is before we commit to any particular individual, we open it up for anyone else who may be able to help us. And also, I was at the state, I told you all that the Department of Tourism and the Star Commission, they have resources available to help underwrite the cost of this particular brochure. And I know they'll request a bid process. So the concept I support, but in terms of selecting someone tonight to do it and pay them $8,000, I do not support. All right, so what did we do in the, in the motion? You passed, we passed a motion, the resolution. All right. Well, I would move to entertain a motion to move to reconsider that portion.
I said, the person making the motion.
No, no, I'm saying I would entertain a motion to reconsider.
Any, any member who was on the prevailing side, which everybody voted for, be a person who can make a motion to reconsider. Anybody.
First of all, let me just say this, in the future, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Assistant City Manager, don't bring any resolutions before this council unless you all, you know, get the attorney to go through them. You know, that's what he's supposed to do, go through all of these before. Now, it's our fault that we didn't read it. I, I really did. You asked me, I had read it. But I don't think that we need to settle on any one particular vendor without opening this up. So, Mr. City Manager, anyone, Mr. Attorney, you're saying anyone, a motion to reconsider is always in order?
It would take anybody who voted on the prevailing side, which is all of you, unless somebody voted against it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
To make the motion to reconsider.
Okay, all right, I thought you said the other way around. A motion to reconsider is, oh, it's, that's a priority motion. Chair will entertain a motion that we, entertain a motion to reconsider and let the council at another day decide who the vendor will be and open up the process. That's all we simply say.
I saw move.
Move and rock the second. Questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, please give a sign of aye. Aye.
Nay.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, those in favor of the motion, let it be known by showing hands. Those opposed are showing hands. Okay, good, the motion to reconsider. Now, we support it in spirit, but we will, the council will have an opportunity to open it up to other vendors later.
Mr. Mayor, I was simply asking, the reason I wasn't, except particularly by it, because I, I would hope that we would have this included after all things that go out, because we get, you get that checklist that we get every month. We get all kinds of checks going out every month, the Bush laws and that, we don't even look at. And so when we start picking things, I think we need to look at consistency in what we do. Because the bid law was looking $15,000 and I know for several months I had talked about things that we get coming in here, we don't get the indication of multiple quotes or bids on them. And we've had major contracts, so I think we need to be consistent in the future in our enthusiasm. That's my own thing about it. It really wasn't that big compared to some of the other things that we hate. So that's my own concern. But I, I share your concern that we should look at everything that comes before us.
Okay.
I just happened to know a little bit about it, but in the future, in our consistency, as we stated as a council, in the past, anything over $3,000, we would ask for multiple quotes. And I can't say that we've had that come before us in the past. So we're going to single out some things, let's do them all in a way that's like...
Thank you, Mr. Pro team, for your comments and others, but the motion passes and we will open it up. Any other items to come before this council? If not, I want to recognize the honorable councilman for life, E. Marion's Councilman, Robert Ivey, his honor. Let's give him a hand. And his wonderful helpmate, Ms. Barbara, let's give her a round of applause. Well, thank you all so much. And to all of our citizens, thank you for coming. If there's anyone else that need to be recognized, yes. Oh, the chief is here. Let's see this award you got, chief. Come on quickly. Mr. Vaughn, you have any film left in your camera?
This is being what he's got.
Mr. Attorney, your report.
As much as I've been talking about, I don't, just the usual report that is that we continue to monitor the non-litigated matters as well as the litigated matters and involve in discovering and some of the litigated matters currently. And I have a report for you and left it on my desk, but we'll put it in your boxes either tonight or in the morning, every about seven minutes.
Okay, great.
If anybody just wants it tonight, then give me about five minutes after we get out and I'll pick one.
Great. Yes. Simply like to ask again for any financial activity related to the legal matters that we are responsible for, kind of get an idea of what we're paying for, how much we're obligated in each one of these cases and what the contingents are, if we can do that in picture from the city management.
Okay. Yes, sir, please, make your, now.
Just wanted to remind the citizens, we are still doing the taxes at the Tuskegee Bank and County Development Corporation. There's free taxes being done. We've had numerous citizens coming in, young and old, even college students. Some have been very, very pleased with their refunds, most of them, as a matter of fact, have been very, very pleased, only very few had to pay anything. But it is a free tax service provided by RIS qualified and certified preparers to do your taxes. We have five people to do them, you can make an appointment and we will get the taxes done for you. And it's your option, if you don't like it, it's not sent in, you can come in and get your taxes done if you like it. We send it in electronically and you should get it back in two weeks at the Tuskegee Bank County Development Corporation, Devil Street. Thank you.
Okay.
One other item, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You have in your package, I would like to pay attention, take attention to the monthly insurance statement from Amy. The guidelines all over the case are showing the deductible, how much you pay and how much you feel owe, all of those different cases.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
I think that would concern that I would have...
I got it. That's in the, in the package, is in your financial report, this is every part of the package.
Here's your right, this is the end of, the S reverse at the end.
Thank you. Okay, all right, chief, come on up. Come on around, sir, you got that wonderful presentation. Our chief is the certified, 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 qualified, certified. Come on around. Oh, I see you couldn't have borrowed Erica's there. Come a long way. I remember...
Chief Patrick has received so many of these awards until you've been embarrassed to take this one, please. Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police and the University Partnership of Alabama, hereback awards Chief Lester C. Patrick Certificate of Achievement in Police Management, 240 hours, dated 29 January 2015. And one other thing, from the Chief R. Allen Benefield, Exeter Secretary on behalf of Alabama Peace Officers, Sp... Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission. I want to congratulate you on attaining our certification as a certified law enforcement executive in Alabama. It is a great accomplishment and a tribute to your dedication to improving your knowledge as well as the law enforcement profession in our state. The commission and I take great pride in this certification program and greatly appreciate your hard work and perseverance in completing the 240-hour training to reach our goal, reach your goal. Congratulations, Chief Patrick.
All right. Got an Oscar here. Glory! Come on around, Chief, let's, everyone has got a picture, we've got a picture here. That's great. How's that? All right, great. All right. Great one. Serious. I'm gonna hold on this till you manage Masons. On that note, Chair will entertain a motion for a jury man.